One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of minutes, regular session, October eighteenth at six P M in the conference room. I entertain a motion to approve both minutes. On favor? Opposed, motion carries. Secondly, the session on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, at eight oh eight P M in the same conference room. I entertain a motion for approval of both minutes. Second. On favor? Authorization of payment of bills.
Um, really don't have anything new, except we got a local tax payment the other day. And that was like two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. My tenure here, we've never had that many taxes paid this early in the year. So people are paying, well, part of that is if you've looked at your tax, that is personal property really jumped up, oh my gosh, because that's the value of used cars and all vehicles. But it was nice, it was like usually this time of year, it's like, uh, six thousand or ten thousand. It was like two hundred and sixteen, I looked at Marcia and says, is that right? So that'll show up next month, but it's just kind of nice to see, you know, see that.
There's no questions, I entertain a motion for a payment, approval for a payment of bills.
Someone?
Second. On favor? Opposed, motion carries. No, yeah, the citizens communications, we have none?
Nope.
Administrator's report, elementary.
Um, so we've, we've been busy. Um, Veterans Day was our big, you know, our last big thing that we've done. And that was a huge success, so we're very pleased with how that went. I know the kids were excited, uh, the veterans were excited. We've even had some kids that have gotten some letters back from some of the veterans. So that's always really great to, for them to make a connection with that. Um, activity night is on Thursday, and so we're trying to get back into the swing of that, you know, after COVID. We had one last year and the year before we had one, so this year we're hoping to really get back into two of those, one in the fall, one in the spring. Um, and so Thursday is our first activity night. We do have a parent portion at the end of that from five to five thirty, and this one's really going to focus on math. Um, and so Mrs. Clark is gonna lead that, so parents can sign up to come to that or can just drop in if they want to. Um, a couple of other things that we have, something new for us this year, Mrs. Van Delft is doing a Who Was Be? Um, so if you've ever seen those books, like Who Was, What Was, What Is? Um, they're nonfiction stories that are a little easier because they kind of, not really a graphic novel, but they add some pictures into them and really entice the kids to read them. So something new that has come around with that is the Who Was Be? And so kind of like a geography bee and a spelling bee, except it's who was. And so it's interesting facts about these characters and places, um, all around the world, um, historical facts. And so we are gonna do one of those this year. We actually had two, one on November twenty-ninth and one on December first. So we'll see how those go, since it's the first time doing it, and that's for students in grades three, four, and five. So we'll see how that goes, but we're excited for that. Um, also, last board meeting, we talked about our, our author visit, Stephen Cozen, and how he had the, uh, writing project for the kids. Well, he's come back with his winner, so we now have our winner, who's gonna get ready to sign a contract to work with him. So fourth grader Lizzie Ackman was chosen, and so she's very, very excited about that. Um, so the family will sign a contract to work with Mr. Cozen, and then she will have a book to publish by the, by the end of it. So pretty exciting, she's very excited, and so to see, um, kids be excited about writing is huge, so awesome. That's about it for the elementary.
Uh, the middle and high school levels, um, the six, or the middle school had their first dance of the year. It was a costume dance, it was in the first quarter celebration, great participation and attendance, it was a good time. Um, middle school teachers did an excellent job planning it, and lots of awards and laughs and good times were, were had. Um, also, we had the R E, R E C sponsored, the Live Wire Assembly, which basically, um, electricity and safety and how to, um, you know, if an accident happened or something, um, unexpected would happen with a downline or anything like what, anything like that, what to do and how to, and make decisions that are, you know, could be life-saving. So that was another, um, great thing for the kids to experience. It's something we've done in the past, it's been a little while with COVID and everything else. Um, but it was, it was good to have them back in the building and be able to share that with our students. Um, we have a lot of great events coming, upcoming. Um, tonight, we have all conference choir, uh, the choir, all conference choir concert, as well as basketball games going on. Tomorrow is the Fall Sports Awards, uh, Night. Um, the seventeenth is the drama play, and then the eighteenth is the sixth grade field trip. So we've got a lot of, um, a lot of fun stuff going on this, uh, the, the next couple of days. Um, from the sports side, we have several people who, and activities side, we had several that weren't, earned awards. Um, and I'll try to do this every month as activities, um, people are recognized. From softball, first team all-region was Jen Hinkle, second team all-region was Agnes, uh, Reel. First team all-state, it was a new position, it's called at-large. Uh, we had our, an all-stater this year, Jen Hinkle. Um, and band, Elijah Reel was third, chair euphonium, Northeast Missouri All District Honorable Mention. And choir, Agnes Reel is all-state honors, first alternate alto. Um, she's the sixth person in school history to make that ensemble, so it's pretty impressive. And, um, it's good to see kind of the creative abilities that our students have, so congratulations to them.
The Reel girls had a pretty good fall.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, just a, really, two things related to grants, been kind of exciting around here, gotten some new grants. Uh, we did get a, um, grant from Desi to help with the expansion of our preschool. So it will fund up to three months of salaries and benefits for the staff, as well as the supplies and equipment and materials. So was excited to get that money. And then the really exciting one that I'm looking forward to, I know Mrs. Vanoy is too, we worked on this one together, was, um, a protonic, um, no, hydroponic, sorry, been to the doctor. A hydroponic grant, so we, each classroom will get a small hydroponic unit for their classroom that the students can draw, grow vegetables, herbs, um, and I think maybe eight to twelve seeds or spots in that. And then there's a large unit that will be accessible for all, that we're really thinking would work well with Mrs. Henry's Conservation Unit. Um, the nice thing about these hydroponic labs is the seeds grow much quicker than in a even, you know, your, your greenhouse. So, um, hoping to see what we can come up with to, uh, get that out in the community and the school and how that will grow. So they will fund, um, those, the district did have to contribute some to ensure that we would get the grant, but it was, um, they awarded eight thousand dollars and the district has to contribute two thousand, so, um, we're excited about that.
And it's got a whole curriculum for each grade level that goes with it, um, so pretty exciting.
The next part will be that they can finally, you know, they plant them and they see it, but then they leave before they produce. And so now they'll be able to actually, you know, to re-put this out, um, you know, and have the benefits of that. So we've talked about, you know, what are some things that we can do with that, like farmer's market, or how can we use it within the building? Um, just different things so that they can see how their food, you know, contributes to our everyday. So, because right now, you know, they plant it, they grow it, but then they don't get to eat any of it or have anything to do with it.
I pick it all summer, you know, and then, or the groundhog eats it, so, you know, whatever works. But this will be good for them to actually see, you know, we already do plant life cycles, so for them to have it in their rooms rather than, you know, little baggies taped up on the window, you know, this will help them with that as well, so.
If it becomes successful, then we talked about possibly getting some more towers. And we have the elementary cafeteria, and that'd be a perfect place for it. Um, so I think, who doesn't like to watch something grow? And I just think it just really brings a lot of excitement in the school.
Is there any regulations that us from using some of that produce in the kitchen to cook and serve kids with?
That's what Kisha's working on to see, um, so we have that option. Because there, but right now, um, federal's really good on farm, just really big on farm to schools. So we're looking, can we, can this be considered farm to school? Um, some schools that do it, like she said, they go to the farmer's market, sell the vegetables, and turn around, donate the money to like the food pantry or something like that, just so students kind of learn the whole, whole cycle. But yeah, we're, we're looking into that because like, one school said, man, they put strawberry plants in there and it just generates like, and tomato plants. And so, so it'll be fun. That all you had?
That's all.
All right. So I want to talk about a couple of things. First, the L C C conference, um, we had a meeting, um, and at our last meeting, we decided, um, now we have three, or two schools, right? Two schools that are eight-man teams in football. And the other seven are eleven-man, so conversation's been like, for those of you that are new, when we first went to eight-man, there was conversations and actually voted one time as to whether or not we needed to stay in the conference because the bylaws said you had to have eleven-man. Well, they didn't vote us out, so we went around ever since then, just trying to figure out what do we do? So we decided as a conference to grow the conference, so we've, we've decided to add some, to invite some eleven-man teams and some eight-man teams, um, to join the conference. Um, there's only one eight-man team close by that we could invite. Um, so we invited North Shelby, and then as far as eleven-man teams, they invited Putnam, they invited Brookfield and Mark Twain. We've heard back from Putnam and Brookfield, and they, they were appreciative, but were not interested. We have not heard, as far as I know, from Mark Twain, but North Shelby accepted. So I imagine after, um, December, we'll have, because we gave until December, the end of December to decide, so I imagine we'll meet in January and, um, vote on, um, adding North Shelby to the conference. So it's exciting to see that, you know, we're actually maybe gonna kind of expand that way. Um, and there may be some other schools that be looking at going eight-man too down the road. So it'll help with, um, hopefully down the road, maybe help with some travel time and still be able to stay in the conference.
Princeton voted to go to eight-man today, I saw that.
Yeah, we, we kind of knew they were.
They're already got their own conference, eight-man conference, pretty limited over there, but, um, it's gonna happen more and more. I imagine I have a couple around here that would, to guess that are, they'll be really close to making that decision.
Do you have anything else?
I just like, I think there's gonna be some chances for us in the future to have some closer friends, so I mean, going along our trajectory and gonna have some positive gains in that side of it.
Yeah, for sure. Um, we're official with bus driver training, we're good to go, we have the curriculum. Um, I've already, uh, dispensed out the curriculum to one person that's filled out an application, so, um, we have nine routes currently, one's, um, got a full-time sub-driver driving it. Um, and we've got two routes that are extremely full, but we also have a lot of issues on those two routes. So, um, and we've had people tell us they're interested, but we haven't heard much more, so we're gonna reach out. But during Christmas break, I may do an open house, um, invite people just to drive a bus around the parking lot. Maybe, you know, it's not as intimidating, talk to them about the process of getting certified. Here's where I'm going with this, with the two buses that are extremely full, we're constant every day, we're getting discipline referrals and, um, frustration from the bus drivers. So if we could, if we could expand to two more routes and reduce the load on those. And it kind of makes it hard because you got one bus going to Colony, so you can't really, you know, do much there. Um, you got Allen going to the, you know, northwest part of the county, you got someone going all the way down to the Macon County line. You've got Newark, you've got Plebna, um, so there's just no good way to divide it up. Um, but I can't, I can't keep letting these bus drivers be frustrated, um, and keep getting disciplined. So if we can find some bus drivers, I'll probably bring their names to the board, but I think it'd be wise to add some routes and, and relieve some of that pressure there and, um, hopefully be able to do some, and the routes will be shorter because right now, um, the, um, Knox City and the Herlon routes are two longest routes. And they, by the time you pick everybody up and go around, and of course, we try and pick them up on the right side of the road, so sometimes you have to go around the block, and so it just takes time. So I, I just wanted to give you guys a heads up, I'll probably put in the paper here sometime soon, pick out some dates and, and Christmas break and do like, uh, open house and let people drive the bus, talk to them about what's involved and see if we can't get some people interested to say, hey, I, I can do this, so.
Is Knox City and Colony together, or are they separate routes?
They're separate routes, they're separate.
So are the kids that are getting in trouble, kids that are on the bus for a significant amount of time? Or is it just because the kids are crowded and the kids think they can get away with it?
Yeah, I think, I think more the latter than the earlier. Um, I mean, they are on, on the bus for a significant amount of time, I mean, fifty-five, sixty minutes. So it would, it would help, so.
Yeah, you're sure we're, we're good on buses then, obviously, as far as having.
Yeah, so, and, and that's kind of what I'm gonna talk about next, um, here in a little bit. But we have the one diesel trip bus that we ordered, we still haven't gotten it yet, it's just taking a long time. Um, we should get it in April. Um, the EPA released, um, the school districts that got awarded. So here's some numbers for you, just for the state of Missouri, there's eighty-nine schools that applied for the EPA electric bus funding. Um, twenty-six schools got selected, we were one of them, so sixty-three did not get selected. Um, the total state of Missouri had, um, applied for three hundred and thirty-three electric buses. Fifty-six of those were awarded and were for, four of those that were on our application, two, two hundred and seventy-seven didn't get awarded. There's four more rounds of this, but the priority schools is going away. So like, we had, we were selected as a priority school, so were all these schools that are on this list, but there's gonna be a lot more schools applying when it's no longer priority. So these four, eh, these four buses, if we approve the, getting these four buses that would be fully funded with, uh, EPA funding, we would get those, um, around the beginning of the school year next year. And then we have a year to get rid of the four buses that they're replacing. Um, so that would give us an opportunity to order a couple more diesels, um, to have for our trip buses. Um, because right now, we've, we've added the, this career, uh, career advisor position. It's a great program, um, and they're going on a lot of trips, taking students to great places, but it's really kind of made it short, you know, we're, we're constantly taking a bus and it's kind of created some short situations, so. And they're telling us it could be up to two years to get diesel buses, so I'm like, we probably better, so I'm probably gonna turn around, um, and put out a R F P for some diesel buses, and I'll keep you guys posted on that.
How many of those four buses do we have to destroy?
So anything that's older than a two thousand and eleven, so the two, two thousand and ten models, we have to destroy. The other two we put on there is the two that are constantly in the shop, and that's the two internationals. And we have fought with those since we bought them, and one's a two thousand and fifteen and one's two thousand and sixteen. And yeah, we have some older buses, we have the two thousand and eleven, we have two two thousand and twelves. But the two thousand and fifteen and sixteen, you drive them, they're just terrible. They're rough, they bounce a lot, um, and they're always having issues. So when I asked Joe, which two would you, and those are the two, now, we'll be able to sell them because there's schools out there that love internationals, and will probably give us good money, and then we can turn around, that money can help with buying some other diesels. But yeah, the two two thousand and tens have to be destroyed. That's all I have.
Move on to food service program report.
So the food service program is attached, um, there's a lot of pictures on there, um, some different, different things that have happened. Um, pumpkin carving, um, they always keep it exciting, they had a meeting with the, um, with the committee, um, the advisory committee and talk about, um, some different things, so they had some waffle bars, um, they're doing that now. Let's see, oh, the yogurt parfait bars, um, so those have really kind of become popular. So, and we're exploring a, an omelet station, so, um, that'll be next. And of course, the pie contest tonight.
Hey, the unfinished business, if there are no items, new business, or stop the electric bus, aren't left here?
Okay, so we had bid openings today, if any of you are ever bored and want to attend, this, Mac can tell you, it's pretty exciting.
Edge of your seat stuff.
Um, so all four companies, Bluebird, International, Lion, and Thomas, all provided bids. Um, I asked for the bids to be, um, priced per bus, with the idea that we will buy one or four, we may buy more than, from more than one company, depending on what we see. Um, going through the bids, um, there are some, Thomas, for example, doesn't offer, um, hydraulic brakes. Um, so we'd have to go back and train our bus drivers, they'd have to take that test, and, um, so they're the only ones that don't offer well. International doesn't either, but they say they can build us one. Um, the other thing is like, Thomas only does DC charging, so we need three-phase. Um, and, um, that's not something, we don't need to fast charge our buses. Um, we have level-two chargers and, and they work sufficient. There's just a lot of things, when you sit through this, there's four companies out there, but like, here's, here's, we have three drivers right now, and they just, so their buses are programmed, so they plug in and they're plugged in all the time, if they're over there, they're plugged in, but they're programmed. So from six o'clock in the morning to ten o'clock at night, it's a trickle charge. So it's like four kilowatts per hour, so just a trickle charge. Well, that keeps the battery pack at a constant seventy-two degree temperature. And it also allows, um, for us to program the preheat setting. So right now, um, like Rhonda's bus is programmed that if it's colder than forty-five degrees outside, then that preheat's gonna kick on twenty minutes before six o'clock, which is when she gets here to do her pre-trip and all that. By the time she gets here at six, that bus is already warm when she walks up in it. By the time she pulls out of the parking lot, the heaters in the back are already warming up the bus. Dean keeps telling me, I have to shut it off, it gets too hot in here. Um, and then the, that's just an example of the technology that's there, uh, the bus communicating with the chargers that the other three companies, you know, when I asked them today, it's like, well, we plug them in and it'll keep our batteries at a certain temperature, um, but I don't think our buses take too long to warm up, but they don't have that feature, they don't have the feature of preheating. They don't have the feature of, they encourage you to plug your buses in all the time, but they don't have the feature of trickling it down for certain hours. And that's kind of one of the things, you know, people are concerned, like, you get all these electric buses on the grid, what's gonna happen? Well, that's one of the reasons we're charging them ten to six at night. Um, not only is it off-peak time, but R E C gives us a better rate. Um, so it works for us and we're not, you know, infringing on the grid. And same with level three, if you got three-phase and you're plugging seven buses in all at the same time on three-phase, then you're gonna get that high-demand extra charge on your bill because you're accessing all this power. So there's just, there's just a lot of things about, you know, when you look at the three companies or four companies, there's one that's way advanced and the other two are continually trying to catch up. You've been in it, you, you've seen it.
It's very optimistic.
So it would have been hard to convince Joe and I to think about a different company. Now, I can sit here and say, oh my God, we had issues with Rhonda's bus. Well, Lion sent people over here, and the people they first sent, so Lion's been growing pretty fast, so the first few people they sent were new and very little knowledge. Um, so I was like, we're not getting anywhere. Well, then they sent, they said their best two guys, one guy was from California, the other one was from Florida. And the guy from Florida pulls in here and he gets on the bus and looks at a few things. He's like, I don't know what's wrong with it. Fifteen minutes later, he's moving the bus, headed running, and it's like, okay. Um, well, then they found out some of the guys that worked on it messed, messed up some of the wiring, so like, one of the big boxes on the top wasn't bolted down, so it was vibrating. So every time Rhonda was hitting these bumps, it had the wire underneath and it was killing the bus, yeah. So he fixed all that, and he's like, we don't know what damage was caused in that box, so we're just replacing that whole box, shift it, they came back, put the box in, it's been working great. Um, Lion just hired someone to be a technician just for Northeast Missouri because of, we have three buses, Island has one, um, and then there's, South Harrison has one, and Princeton has one, and they're probably gonna sell some more.
Is Rhonda's bus the main one that's had the issue?
Yeah, and it's an older generation, um, so it's a little bit different. Um, but that's why, that's where I was getting to with this, is I asked these guys about, what's your plan for fixing the bus if? And Ken Pierce, uh, International's like, well, you're gonna tow it back to the school. I said, that's not what I meant. When it's back at the school, what's your plan to fix it? Well, Bluebird's like, well, our shop's in Fenton, so you just take it to Fenton. Well, you don't just drive a bus, electric bus to Fenton, so basically, we'd have to ship the bus to Fenton. So you're losing a day if you can get a semi to take it down there that day, however long it takes them to fix it, and then another day to come back. Um, so they're just, just not there. And, um, the fact that anytime we've had an issue, somebody's here, or Joe's on the phone with someone, Joe's learned a ton. Like, these two guys that were here last time, Joe's like, I wish I'd have known that. And they were showing him the diagnostic on the screen, on the telematic screen. He was like, here's how you read this, and here's how you read that. And so it's, it's just been nice, the support that's been there and, and the learning process.
Um, do you, do you, do you know where that technician's located at? You said they're, they're hired for Northeast Missouri, but what, you know where they're gonna be based out of? Like, how, what's the path to get here?
I don't know, but Lion told me, so when we were having issues with these buses, um, there was an email thread, and in that email thread was like, um, we have to fix this issue, we have to fix it now, and we need to find a technician that's gonna be within fifty miles of Knox County at all times. Um, so, so that's kind of, now, I don't know what, what the background, I was told this guy's name's Thomas, but I don't know what, what the thought is, like, where they're gonna be.
I mean, that's, I mean, if they're within an hour, per se, that's, that's good, especially with this technology. But yeah, that's much better, I would imagine that you're gonna get from anywhere else in this area.
Well, and they travel with their vehicles, with their tools, and then everything, and Joe has got, through Lion, he's got pretty much everything you need to work on the buses.
Right.
So this guy flying from Florida and California, they're like, oh wow, you have all this stuff we need, great, you know, and it just makes it nice, so.
Standardizing for like, common parts and stuff. Standardizing for like common parts and stuff.
Right, right.
Not have three different types of buses is very.
I know, there was, there was a part of me, I was like, well, we should try different ones, see which one we like better, and Joe's like, no. So I, I understand that. So anyways, so when it's all said and done, um, Lion Electric was the cheapest one. Their base bid price was three sixty-nine, nine ninety-nine. Everybody else, um, was with the full air conditioning was way above. Hold up my minutes here because I did the, the math. So Lion Electric for three hundred and seventy-four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars, that's per bus with full AC, with a backup camera, with heated and adjustable mirrors. Basically, it's all the bells and whistles that you can get with it. Thomas built came in with full AC at four hundred and two thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars per bus. Central State Bus Sales came in at four hundred and two thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars per bus. And Midwest came in at three hundred and ninety-four thousand one hundred and thirty-four thousand per bus. That's International. So Lion Electric, we're getting three hundred and seventy-five thousand per bus, so, um, up to that amount. So the buses won't cost us anything. And the charging, um, the charging infrastructure, the charging units cost, um, right around seven thousand. Um, and it's cost us about twenty-five hundred to have a professional electrician put them in. Um, so they give us twenty thousand towards charging in, up to. So that'll cover the full cost of the charging station, so. What I'm saying is, we have the opportunity, we've been selected to get four free buses even if we decide and get two diesels to go with it. We can't go wrong here and these are gonna have air conditioning, these, um, and right now, um, we're saving north of five thousand dollars a year on fuel versus electric. So not only are they free, but every time they're on the road, they're saving us money.
What about drivers will be, will the drivers, the current drivers?
That's why there's AC on these.
I think that's gonna be a perfect example.
Yeah, I, I think so. Um, I've already had two drivers tell me, hey, you get more electric buses I want in. And then, um, Red said the other day, he says, I just don't like the sound they make when that sound generator, he says, can you make it a train? So I, I mean, you're finding out what, um, but like, as winter comes like this, like, diesels don't warm up very well and they don't stay warm every time you open the door. Well, the heat is part of the diesel engine, whereas electric buses, the heat is its own thing, so. Um, it, it just heats up a lot faster and it gets a lot hotter and stays hot. Um, so I think that and the air conditioning's gonna convince a lot of people that, okay. Once you drive it, I don't know, eh, if I had to run a regular route, I'd be like, okay, who's giving me their electric bus because? So.
Did any other schools in the Northeast area get?
Yes. Skylar, um, applied for one, Harris applied for three. Mark Twain applied for two and they ordered their two yesterday. She told me they ordered from Lion Electric. Who am I forgetting? Salisbury applied for two and Monroe City applied for one and they got it. There's one more.
Did, I don't get, there's the desert, they already have one?
They have one, they applied for six more and didn't, um, didn't get it. So did, um, Princeton has one and they applied for, I don't know, applied for five more. Princeton applied for six more, but they didn't get selected. There's one more somewhere, but.
Define lead, like, the lead times, are they gonna be?
Nine months.
But if we have a bunch of free buses to get placed on, where that's probably gonna shift.
Well, it depends on who orders first, so a lot of people are just so. So like Massa, our state organization, asked me to do a Zoom webinar next Monday because there's like a bunch of schools, not just the ones that got awarded, but the ones that applied or wanna apply again, that wanna learn about it. So a lot of them are waiting for this, for me to talk to them about what's going on, and so.
Make sure you get our order before you have that.
Yeah, before you.
Yeah, so, but here's the thing is, you know, the three buses we, we have, Lion always promised six months delivery. All of them we got in less than six months. The last ones we ordered in December and got them at the end of March. Um, because that's all they do, that's, that's what they build. So they're saying because of the high demand that's gonna be there, they're moving it back to nine months, so.
Well, and only, my thought is, only one of those companies is an electric school bus company. The other companies are bus companies that make electric school buses. To me, it's a no barrier, but I assume you're recommending four.
Yes.
From Lion, I'll make that motion.
I'll second. All in favor? Move on to municipal bond underwriting services agreement.
Okay, remember last month, LJ Hart, um, came and presented about running a, a no tax increase bond issue. They gave us several options, um, where we can take some of our classroom trust fund and funnel it in there for five years or whatnot. The one option I'm comfortable with is fifty thousand for five years in a row. Um, that would put us at two point two-five million dollars. In this bond issue, with the two million we have, we can do about four point two-five million dollars worth of projects. But before we can start working on a no tax increase bond issue, we need to, um, uh, vote on this, um, hiring LJ Hart to do our underwriting services.
So moved.
All in favor? And we'll move on to RFQ for building projects, information only.
Okay, um, just wanted to give you some information so we can get, get busy. Um, the facilities committees met several times, we talked about projects, we've talked about prioritizing what we wanna do. Um, the last meeting we had, uh, well, several meetings before, we had cleaners here talking about what they do. We went through cleaners when we were in two thousand and twelve. That would be hiring an architectural firm and engineers to design everything. But if you remember back then, Gary and I had to do a lot of the legwork as far as what happened day to day. And we can't fit it into our schedule. We don't wanna fit it into our schedule, so we're looking for a different route. There's two other options. One is a, um, performance contracting company, they come in. Um, they'll say, how much money do you have? They'll say, we can do these projects, it's not gonna cost you a dollar more or a dollar less. Um, but then you have very little control over what actually happens, you don't see the breakdown and, um. I'm not in favor of that just because I, I like four and I think the community would like some openness of, you know, who gets to bid. And we've got some local people that'll probably want some work out of this. The other option is, we had a presentation, um, a few weeks back, uh, the committee did, about a owner's rep. And this is becoming pretty popular and, and, and there's several schools that have went that route. Basically, you're hiring this company, hiring an employee from this company as kind of like, uh, a temporary employee. And their company has a lot of experts, they have engineers and architects. They don't do the work, but they're like, okay, this, this makes sense, you need to. So then they'll go out and find architects and engineers and, and do a bidding process for that and then they'll do a bidding process. But they'll be at the table for, with us all the time. So it's basically kind of what we did last time, except Gary and I were doing, and we're not experts in the field. Um, whereas this company would be experts. And how, how it works, it's a five-year, you sign up, eh, we put out an RFQ and it's a five-year contract, but you only pay them an hourly rate if you're asking them to do a project. So you could start as simple as say, we wanna start off, let's just do the drop ceilings and see what we think of your work. So then they're gonna draw up, okay, we need, um, this many hours to get this planned out, you pay them that. And then they'll do that. And then if you're happy, then you can say, well, we wanna do this. Or you could say, we wanna do all these projects. Um, they'll give you a fee. You don't pay anything until you agree. Okay, yeah, we'll do that. So there's really no strings attached until you, you sign and agree to pay them for their hours that they're gonna spend on organizing all this.
And we'll have oversight on it too, making.
Yes, yes. So, and, and they'll be as open as you want them to be, like he said, we'll send, we can send your board members pictures on a weekly basis. Here's the changes, here's what's going on. Um, so a lot more communication, um, and I think it's, it's just gonna be, um, a lot better and, um, easier for Gary and I.
A couple of things that they had said too, which I thought was, didn't surprise me, but. So you know how a cleaner gave us those quotes for all those different projects, itemizing? They all seem stupid high, or most of them did to me. Um, and I get some of that because of pricing and you never know when you're gonna worry, I gotta. But what they're able to do a lot of times is take your budget that you have and get, you know, whereas you might think you're gonna get four of those projects done, they actually extend that into like five or six because they're, they understand the details and the information behind that process, so they're, they call people out. They know what's a good bid, what's a bad bid, they have the resources in the field to put one against the other. So they've had a lot of success, not all the time, but a lot of success in actually taking that money and getting more bang for your buck out of it because of that layer of, or that level of expertise that they have within their organization.
Well, one of the comments he made, like cleaners, you know, they're like, oh yeah, we'll redesign your playground and this and that. One of the comments he made, he's like, playgrounds, he says, you don't need to pay architects to design your playground. He says, call these playground companies and tell them what you want and have them give you bids. He says, you're cutting all that out. He says, that's not something that you put on a project. So a lot of things like that just made sense to me and, um. I, so we put out an RFQ, so that's, um, we advertise it, we have to advertise it for three weeks. Um, have to be advertising pretty large papers, so St. Louis, Kansas City, um, but also local papers. Um, and we're looking for partners, so we'll get some applicants and people, um, present and then we'll select who we wanna work with, um, because there's probably more than one owner's rep company out there, so. Um, when we get to that point, I'll let you know when we're opening up those, um, RFQs and as long as we don't have more than three board members there, we can sit in and see what they have to say and. Um, then at that next board meeting, we'll get somebody hired so they can start. So I'm gonna move on this pretty fast. Linda's office is looking at the RFQ. Um, they should have something back to me tomorrow to make sure that it's, we're protected and everything that we're advertising for, so. Um, advertise it, hopefully in December we can act on it and start. Because when we start working on a bond issue, we need to, we need to know what projects we're gonna put in there so that people know what we're wanting to do, so. That was just information, letting you guys know that, um, that's the direction that we're gonna proceed.
Okay, next up is set filing dates for the April fourth, twenty twenty-three election.
It's that time of the year. What I'm gonna do is just read the motion to you and that's just gonna make it easier. To set the dates for the Board of Education candidate filing for three positions to begin December sixth, twenty twenty-two at eight AM and end on December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two at five PM. Remember, they shorten the length of applying. During regular business hours, Monday through Friday, eight AM to four, extended to five PM on December twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, the last day to file. Filing will not occur on days the district superintendent's office is closed due to inclement weather. Filing will also not occur from December twenty-second through the twenty-sixth, um, but it will be open on that last day till five o'clock.
So moved.
Seven. All in favor?
She's not here.
She's not here.
Number nine here. I make the motion to adjourn the regular session meeting to go into closed session for the purpose of considering the following. Students under section six ten point zero two one, subsection, subsection six of fourteen. Personnel under section six ten point zero two one, subsection three and thirteen.
Mrs. View?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mrs. Janson?
Yes.
Mrs. Hagerly?
Yes.
Mr. Rio?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Motion carries six zero.
Meeting is adjourned. Meeting is adjourned.
She was out there.
She's sitting. I thought maybe she.